Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Selectments Meeting of July 1st, 2021. May I have a roll call, please?
All five Selectmen, as well as Town Council, are present.
Thank you. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
We have a motion to go into executive session with a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say a roll call. Mr. Torpiano, yes. Mr. Muniz?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Thank you. Myself, yes. We are now in executive session.
Did you lock that, Alan?
Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen. I apologize for being a few minutes later than we thought we would be. I'll have a roll call, please.
Okay, a new roll call. Okay, all five Selectmen are present, as well as Town Council.
Who can say the pledge of allegiance the fastest? Mr. Peabody, lead us on the pledge of allegiance. Just stand up and say.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm going to skip forward to the application of Trevor's...
What is it?
And Ms. Morton, you're here. Maybe you can explain what you're doing so we... Application from T-Bar LLC, 144 Onset Avenue, Onset, which is item 8C. Go for it.
Hi, I'm here today for T-Bar LLC. That's the T-Bar onset. Trying to get a seasonal license. We are in the process of doing a seasonal license. It's still being reviewed by the building commissioner, I believe, is the last one on that, but trying to hit the summer season to get those licenses in place. And it would be for the second and the third, so tomorrow and the next day.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? We're going to be asked to sign and actually hand these to Ms. Morton because the events are tomorrow and the next day. And she has a birthday party to go to. I'll accept a motion.
My son, who's only three, so.
Okay, that's fine.
Hold on a second, I want to find the thing first.
Do you want to make this motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the application from T-Bar LLC, 144 Onset Ave., Onset Mass. for two one-day liquor licenses for July 2nd, 2021, and July 3rd, 2021, both of them for 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Is there a second to Mr. Titlebaum's motion? Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Yes, sir.
On May 21st. Ms. Muniz?
Can you pull the mic closer to you, please?
May 21st.
I believe, Mrs. Whiteside, you... Did we put in a policy that 30-day before, you know, because these things pop up, and this happened last year, the year before, and not just with Mr. Watson, but with others? So I'm just bringing that up because why are we going to bother making these policies if we're just going to... And I want that just to be on the record.
Thank you. I don't think we made it a policy. It's a very strong suggestion. It's also on the top of the...
It is in the policies under other stuff for 30 days, but, you know, just please don't...
This year has been very, very tough for a lot of people, and we are telling people right and left, you should have done this 30 days ago, and we... You know, or the 90 days, and we're following the recommendation of the ABCC in terms of the lead times.
Well, just so it's understood, if he's going to plan to do others, get them in sooner than later, otherwise I won't support them.
Right. I do know he did apply for more, actually, yesterday, so.
That's correct. We have them in the office as of yesterday. They'll be on the agenda of the 13th.
All right, I don't want to keep you, so this is kind of a...
Yeah. Any establishments allowed up to 30 in a year's time, so just bear that in mind. I mean, if it's just going to be open a couple of days a week, then you're probably not going to run afoul of that during the summer season, but it's obviously in his interest not to have to spend $100 on a one-day every time he wants to do something. It's in his interest to go ahead and get the seasonal, so hopefully that comes across our desk soon.
Yes, Mr. Slavin?
I just want to, again, put into the record that our procedures and policies are nice, but at the end of the day, unless it's a bylaw or an actual part of our home rule charter, it really doesn't mean much, because if you had to defend it, you can't. So it's nice to have policies, but we already have a history of not following policies, not following procedures, so I don't... I understand where Jim's coming from, but at the end of the day, it really doesn't matter, unfortunately.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve, and did I hear a second? I don't remember.
Second.
Second, okay. Motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. It is unanimous. If you wait two seconds, we will give you the licenses, because I know that he needs them.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Gentlemen of the board, I appreciate your forbearance. And we have a hearing at 7:15, right? So do we have to go to that right now?
7:15, yeah. You ready?
Yeah. The people who are here for the hearing on the application of a transfer for Brown's Liquor, you can all step forward, and we just won't open the hearing until we're ready to open the hearing, if that's okay.
Come on down and have a seat.
Come on down.
And when you talk, speak clearly into those mics, right up to your mouth, okay?
Yeah, pull up the mics close, please. And we will start in a moment, please. Yeah, thank you. I will accept a motion to open the hearing.
I move we open the hearing for the application for a transfer of an existing year-round packaged goods store, all-alcoholic beverage license, from Brown's Package Store, Inc., DBA Brown's Liquors, to D... Daskrea? Is that... I said it right?
Daskrea.
Oh my God, somebody give me a medal. Inc., DBA Brown's Package Store, 189 Marion Road, Wareham, under the provisions of Chapter 138 of Massachusetts General Laws for the year of 2021.
Is there a second to the motion to go into, to open the hearing?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Muniz. I have a motion and a second to open the hearing. All those in favor say aye. Roll call, Mr. Torpiano?
Yes.
Whiteside, yes. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Muniz?
Yes.
Slavin?
Yes.
500. The hearing is open one moment, until we finish signing our name, if you don't mind. And we will ask you to identify yourselves for the record, and I'm sure you know the drill, but... And again, thank you very much for allowing us to jump ahead.
Okay. Give him his effective one back.
Thank you. Gentlemen, would you identify yourselves for the record, please?
Yes, good evening. My name is Attorney Tom Souza, and I represent Daskrea, Inc. With me tonight is Mr. Kieran Bagna, to my right, and Kebby Rai, to my left. Mr. Bagna will be the proposed manager for the new owners, and Mr. Rai is one of the officers and directors of the corporation, the president. So, look, this evening, we're just asking you to approve a transfer. These gentlemen want to purchase the existing Brown's Package Store. So we come here tonight asking that you approve their application to do so. Mr. Bagna is, has several years' experience working in retail package stores, and we think he'll be a great asset and do a good job. So we hope that you will favorably approve our application.
Thank you, sir. Do you gentlemen choose to speak to us, address us, either of you?
We go.
Unless you have any questions.
Mr. Slavin, do you have questions?
I have several questions. First of all, are you buying the property itself or leasing it?
Leasing.
Leasing it. So my understanding is in the application, when I read it, that the owners of Brown's Liquors are leasing the property then, but are keeping some portion of the basement to store liquor of their own in that?
That is for a while. He has a... He wants other liquor store down, I think, Mayflower Liquor Store.
Yeah, Mayflower, on 6th and 28th.
Yeah, he has inventory, including both stores, so he wants to keep part of the inventory, so he doesn't have a space to put it right there. So he said about a few months, so he will move that away.
That's actually not allowed.
That's why I'm bringing it up. There's a question.
On a different ownership, it wouldn't be allowed.
Probably.
One at a time, please.
The reason I bring it up is...
Mr. Slavin?
The reason I bring it up is there's always been a question that you can't have, you know, liquor for two different establishments in the same laws in this area, even though it's under his... Even though it's locked and stuff, there's no guarantee, because deliveries come in and out. So that... I look at that as an issue, unfortunately. Also, if you're leasing the property, are you responsible for actually maintenance of the property outside-wise, as far as, you know, the grass, lawns, et cetera?
He is part of it, but there is another store also there, I think Domino's.
Domino's is to the right.
And according to our lease, property outside, so far cleaning inside is my responsible, and rest of it, he's responsible. Like, snow plowing is my responsible, but lawn taking care, all those things, he's responsible.
Okay, because there is a section, if you look at the market, there's a spot where they can park cars, that's actually on Brown's property, which they never take care of the lawn, et cetera, which they're supposed to for a long time, so.
You mean outside, the parking?
If you look to the right, if you come basically directly from the liquor store out to the street, slightly to the right, there's a piece of land, and there's an area that's paved, but it's really not access for you to park in. That's part of their property, but it's never maintained, since it's not your responsibility. It's not your responsibility, so I'm not going to make you do it. I'm just making a comment, that's all.
Okay. Mr. Slavin, could you just bring your mic closer?
I can't get much closer unless I eat it.
And another thing is, like, on the basement, yeah, there's a lock system?
I understand, but I still don't think they're going to buy that.
Not allowed.
It's not allowed. Mr. Souza, can you address that issue, please, for us?
Well, I'm not familiar with the Mayflower. I know that...
It's a small package store.
Well, I know that you can transfer alcohol between jointly-owned stores. The storage issue, I'm not aware of.
We are.
As to whether... I would go by what you say, obviously.
Once you purchase the store, he cannot... You can't co-mingle your alcohol. It's not... It's just not allowed.
If we could, could we have Attorney Bowen?
Yes, certainly. Mr. Bowen?
Bowen will take care of this.
Is your mic on?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, through you, to Selectmen Muniz and the members of the board. It's always been my understanding that each business had to be accounted for separately, with its own books, its own order sheets with the wholesalers, and so forth. Just as a suggestion, so that the board wouldn't be held up in its review of the matter, I'd suggest, as a condition, that were this to be approved, that the new license holder, if that's the way it works, be directed to seek clarification with the ABCC regarding proper accounting and relationships with wholesalers and the order sheets.
And provide that information to this board?
If you wish.
Sure.
I'm fine. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Not for me.
Mr. Muniz?
No, basically the same one he had.
Okay. The package is very complete. There's this much paperwork, and so I am in a position to accept a motion.
I move that we approve the transfer of license from Brown's Package Store to Daskrea, Inc., DBA Brown's Package Store.
Keep reading, 189. Okay.
Yeah, I don't have to read that whole thing.
Motion made. Is there a second to the motion?
Second, just one comment.
Yes.
Has nothing to do with the license. Under our bylaws, et cetera, the zoning, we have issues with a lot of the package stores. They have a tendency to basically put signs and everything all through their windows. This particular building, the way it was built, is kind of like a bomb shelter with, like, one window, so you have to have no more than 25% of that window covered, because basically if the police or the fire department had to come in, and it's less... If there's less than 25%, basically, they're not going to come in. So if you have a robbery, they're not helping you. So you have to make sure that stays, that at least they can see 75% of going in that window. And again, like I said, this particular building was built with very little of anything.
One window, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion as well as a second.
I got that, yeah. I move that we also approve the application from Daskrea, Inc., DBA Brown's Package Store, 189 Marion Road, for a pledge of the license.
Is there a second to...
I don't have who it's to. I should, but I don't.
It's to the bank, Rockland Trust.
Rockland Trust.
Rockland Trust.
The Rockland Trust, okay, bingo.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to the transfer, as well as the pledge.
I love the way they do this, because, you know, it doesn't mean anything.
Yeah, it doesn't mean anything.
It totally means nothing.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. It is unanimous. Mr. Souza, you will have to provide information to this board, as well as to the gentlemen who are selling and the gentlemen who are purchasing, that makes sure that we know what we're doing, and they know what they're doing in terms of the storage, because it is a valid question.
Very good.
Thank you.
Will this paperwork be ready for them?
Yeah, this paperwork, Monday's a holiday. I would say Wednesday, the paperwork might be available, but you should also, at that time, have provided us with the information that we've requested.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to close the hearing, please? We didn't do that.
So moved, we already...
We did?
So moved. No, we already... We should have closed it before we deliberated, but it's fine.
We didn't close the hearing. Okay, may I have a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second. All those in favor of closing the hearing, Mr. Torpiano, Whiteside, yes. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Muniz?
Yes.
Okay, now I will accept a motion.
You never know when you want to sneak something in.
Yeah, second, motion to affirm the actions that we just took. Is there a second to that motion?
Yes.
Thank you. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Patrick, yes.
Yeah. Whiteside, yes. Titlebaum, yes.
Yes, yes.
Muniz, yes. Slavin, yes. It's been a long evening, gentlemen.
Already, and it's not even the 16th over yet.
It's been a long year.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Never get this over.
Good luck.
Well, we're not going to.
Good luck, guys.
It's going to be a lot. I guess so. I mean, this is quite a set of announcements, so... All right, so... You know what to do? You know what to do? I'll tell you what we do. To make this easier and fast, pass some of these out, let everybody kind of do one, it'll go quicker.
Okay, we're going to... We have some announcements, and Mr. Titlebaum, Mr. Torpiano's going to start reading them, and...
Okay. All right, so there's board and committee openings. These have been advertised in the Wareham Week for the Bike Path Committee, the Board of Health, Cemetery Commissioners, Conservation Commission, Council on Aging, Historic District Committee, Historical Commission, Library Board of Trustees, Minut Forest Committee, Planning Board, Wareham Cultural Council, Wareham Veterans Council, and Zoning Board of Appeals. Applications are available at the town website, or may be picked up in person at the Selectmen's Office at Town Hall between the hours 8:15 and 6:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday. Okay, next.
Thank you.
So everybody knows, this is kind of weird, but Lindsay's is not going to be open on 4th of July.
Because they can't get help.
Next is Aspen Blue Wareham, Inc., is planning an opening marijuana cultivating facility located at 8 Elm Street, Wareham, Massachusetts, pursuant to the Mass Regulations 935 CMR 500.101. We hereby notifying the abudders that there will be a community outreach concerning the proposed facility on Tuesday, July 13, 2021, at the Freight Building on 8 Elm Street, Wareham, Mass. 02571. Attendees will have the opportunity to make... to meet key members of the organization and ask questions. All right, that's the same thing. Okay, I'm good. Next up.
Do you have any?
You want me to read these? Is there... Okay. I guess you want them read fast. Okay, Council on Aging plans July activities. Senior Center still closed, but a variety of outdoor and indoor activities are planned. Council Center hopes to resume full operations in the near future. July 13, 9:00 a.m., learn to shellfish at the Onset Bay Center. Program is free, space is limited. Call Cat Garofoli at 508-999-6363, extension 227, to register. July 14, 9:45 a.m., learn to make greeting cards. For this one, you would call 508-291-3130. July 21 and 28 at 10:00 a.m., celebrate Christmas in July by making six ornaments. All materials provided. Call 508-291-3130. Coffee and conversation takes place each Tuesday from 9 to 10 a.m. at the rear of the multi-service center. Get reacquainted and meet new friends. Every Wednesday, go for a walk at the Wareham Middle School Field at 10 a.m. with a group, weather permitting. Register by calling, 508-291-3130. Tai Chi is held every Tuesday at 1:00 p.m. in the library courtyard, weather permitting. Chair Yoga with Pam takes place every Thursday at 2:00 p.m. in front of the library, weather permitting. Grab and Go Boxes are available Tuesdays and Thursdays, courtesy of the Old Colony Elder Services. Lunches must be reserved at least three days in advance by calling 508-291-3130, and can be picked up at the multi-service center handicap ramp. The July menu can be found on the Council on Aging's Facebook page at facebook.com/warehamcoa. Okay, Methodist Church to host Summer Fair. They will be doing this on Saturday, August 7, from 9 a.m. to 3 p.m., rain or shine. Fair will feature thrift shop, crafts, baked goods, outside vendors, and a Chinese auction. The church will also be serving lunch. Menu includes homemade clam chowder, hot dogs, hamburgers, chicken sandwiches, and strawberry shortcake. Those interested in participating can reserve a 10-foot square spot for $25 by calling Denise at 508-295-2828. Church is located at 462 Main. Let's see, the summer food program, this has been going on at different places around the town. Somebody's been doing it at Brandy Hill and so on and so forth, but now the schools are doing it in the summer. Wareham Public Schools will be running its USDA Summer Food Service Program, Tuesday, June 22 through Friday, August 13. Bagged grab-and-go breakfasts and lunches are distributed by Wareham Public Schools, Monday through Friday, 10:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Meals for all children 18 years old and younger. No student ID required. Children do not have to be present for parents to pick up their meals. On Friday, three bagged breakfasts and three bagged lunches are provided, so children have them available on Saturday and Sunday. All sites will be closed in observance of Independence Day on Monday, July 5. On Friday, July 2, four bagged breakfasts and four bagged lunches will be provided. Distribution locations: Wareham Middle School, the Van Shell in Onset, Woods at Wareham Apartment Complex, Cremeset Road Pump Station, and the Deacon's Elementary School Cafeteria entrance. This is usually signs out on the road directing people to where these are, so.
Thank you. That's it?
That's all you got.
Mr. Muniz, do you have any? Thank you. Mr. Slavin?
I think the YMCA also does a food distribution program, too. It's listed in their website. The Onset Bay Association, in conjunction with the VFW on Ballpark Road in Onset, is doing a Wednesday night concert. I think they start somewhere around 6:30, 7:00. Before then, you can go over to the VFW. They've redone the facility there, and you can actually get a meal there. The meals are listed on their website. You can order ahead of time or pick it up. Meal usually runs about $10, which is extremely good buy. You can sit down and enjoy a meal and listen to music. It's appreciated very much if people participate and take advantage of this. It's a really strong fundraiser for the Onset Bay Association for all the events they do, and also it basically puts a lot more funds into the VFW. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to add two things. If it's too hot for you outside, it's certainly too hot for your pets. Please, please, and one more please, do not leave your animals or your children in a car. I don't care if the air conditioning's running or not. You will be ticketed, and you will face very stiff penalties. The other thing is, we all know, those of us who own animals, that this weekend is a tough weekend for dogs and cats. There's a lot of fireworks that go on all the time. The thunderstorm that we had this afternoon was a very good demonstration of how upset your animals can be with that kind of noise. So just be aware of that. Make sure that they're not running around loose. And that's it?
Benadryl works really good for that.
A Benadryl works really well for that? I don't think so.
Calms them right down.
Okay, now back to citizens' comments. I would remind you that you have a couple of minutes. Mrs. Slavin, how are you this evening? Would you care to address the board? Thank you.
Better list.
Don't forget to...
Been a while.
Thanks.
Welcome back.
Sandy Slavin. I'm here as an officer of the Toby Hospital Guild. I am promoting a cookbook. It's $15. It's available at the gift shop at Toby Hospital, Tuesday through Friday, 10 to 4. This is a fundraiser for us, because we are trying to... We made a pledge for a something called an in-body 770 machine to be used at the Fair Haven Cancer Center for the diagnostic and treatment of breast cancer. I'm a breast cancer survivor, so this is dear to my heart that we provide as much machinery and knowledge as we can to help those that have been diagnosed as such. But again, I have them, if you know how to reach me, but the guild is at the... And the gift shop at Toby's now open, Tuesday through Friday, 10 to 4.
So you can actually go in the front lobby and...
Yes, and they'll test you, and you have to wear a mask, but the... You know, they will help you. If the door's locked, the receptionist has a key to get in. So again, this is what it looks like.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Very nice.
And good luck with it.
And I'm not having anything else to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who chooses to speak to us?
Nancy?
Nancy. Excuse me, Ms. McHale.
Thank you, Nancy McHale. Thank you. I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention that the Wareham Land Trust and the Massachusetts Audubon Society, we have been co-hosting and we're serving as a service site for a terror corps service member for years. We've done... We've shared one for two years now. We're looking for applicants for next year. Those applications are being considered now, so if anyone is interested in dipping your toes into conservation and doing outreach, community outreach, as well as some stewardship work, helping to keep the towns' trails open, that sort of thing, please contact the Wareham Land Trust. Our applicant... The advertisement is also in Wareham Week, so they could get the information there, or they can call the Wareham Land Trust.
Is there an age restriction, Ms. McHale?
No.
Young age restriction, old age restriction?
No, there is no age restriction, and there's a stipend that goes along with it. And at the end of the 11-month service year, you can actually get, I think it's almost $6,500 to pay off student loans. If you're an older individual, you can use it toward your own education, or you can use it to pay off of family members' loans. So it's really a good deal.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And on another note, I was... The Solar Bylaw Committee, I didn't know if it was on your agenda to take a...
It may be being brought up under boards liaison reports or boards comments. I'm not really sure. I know that Mr. Muniz will be bringing it up.
Okay, I just, you know, I'll be here if there's any comments I could add to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else here who chooses to make comments? Two minutes. Identify yourself, please.
My name is Joseph Ammaral.
Not until you sit down, because in order for it to be picked up.
Otherwise, no one heard you.
Start again, please.
My name's Joseph Ammaral. I'm owner and operator, manager, at Pepin's Liquors, 2259 Carberry Highway. I was just here today. I'm with Danny, Rakesh, and Gary, all from three local liquor stores in town, Anchor, Wareham Liquors, and Liquor Locker. Just here, just don't want to take too much time, not big on public speaking, but I did want to come up and just ask to reconsider the... want to come up and just ask to reconsider the nip ban issue. I know it's already kind of been rolling and everything like that. I sent you guys a letter about a week ago, just something, I don't know if there's a possible appeal process or anything that we can do further from here to...
I can address that, Mr. Ammaral. The item was passed at the town meeting and would have been forwarded to the...
Attorney General.
Attorney General's Office for Action. It takes anywhere up to three, maybe four months for that action to come back. We have no authority to override a town meeting vote, and so we're all in a holding pattern right now.
Okay.
And we, we are prohibited from engaging in a conversation with you about it. I just can let you know that that's fact. Yes, sir.
There is one, there is one thing that needs to be clarified. You think of the meeting, people might have looked at the article, but the actual motion that was passed, put off the date of enforcement for the nip bottles banned, was a year. So it's not, it's not...
May 11th.
It's pushed off for a year.
November 1st.
I'm sorry, Mr. Slaven?
Check with the clerk's office, because I think there was a discrepancy between the warrant and what the motion was.
I believe it was November 1st.
Can't hear you.
I saw May 1st, 2022, but this will be devastating for all the local liquor stores in town. I mean, business-wise, very much so, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ammaral. Is there anyone else here who chooses to speak, address the board? No. We're going to skip over board comments on the reports until...
Later, next week.
Yeah, next week. We are, we're way behind where I'd like to be right now. The next item on the agenda would be the appointments and reappointments. We have one new possible appointment of Louis Gonzaga as a constable for the town of Wareham. Mr. Gonzaga is trilingual, which I believe is unique among our constables and in today's world. It is certainly a benefit. Yes.
Can I?
We haven't had a motion or anything, so...
Right. Can I, can I make a motion to reconsider the applicants that we denied?
After we do this, if you don't mind? Yes, you may.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly. I don't believe any of us have any questions of Mr. Gonzaga. You gave a very...
I move we approve the, approve Louise, Louise?
Louis.
Louis. Louis, is that how you say it? Gonzaga.
Louis. It's almost like the idea doesn't exist.
Yeah, Gonzaga.
I got that right. I got this Gonzaga.
Luigi.
Louis, right?
Luigi.
Yeah. Gonzaga is constable for the town of Wareham, term to expire June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Troppiano, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of approving Mr. Gonzaga for a one-year term to expire June 30th, 2022, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous. You may pick up your paperwork on, I would say, Wednesday at our office on the third floor.
Thank you very much. It's an honor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James, Jim, you're on.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead, please.
I'd like to move to reconsider the constables that we denied appointment to last week because we didn't have, give notice that it was going to be a condition of a certain amount, and we should probably make it a condition and understanding that during the course of the year, if you don't make any services, do any services in the town, it will be a reason for not to reappoint in the following year. Or if you want to set some other, I think, limiting it, and I appreciated that, but I think we need to give them notice and as, you know, respectful to them.
So your motion would be to bring them back, those applications back on the 13th?
And make a motion to...
Is there a second to his motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Muniz and seconded by...
We even need a motion and a second, because we don't have, really just have this on the agenda.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, it's all right.
Yeah, it's okay. Motion made and seconded. Go ahead.
To bring them back on the agenda.
To bring them back on the agenda, on the, Mr. Slaven?
I'm the one who pushed on this. I have no problem coming back, because we just had so many, and, you know, there's just so question of how many were actually serving or they were just adding it to their resume.
Right. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous. Thank you very much. We'll get them on the agenda.
Shall I go on to the announcement for the rest of these?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. I move we approve Amanda Cobb, Amanda Cobb to, let's see, the Cover Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Wow, you're good. We usually, we usually interview you, then make the motion, so...
Yeah, but that's okay. We, we called her up and said we really need you. And, yes. Would you identify yourself for the record and...
I'm Amanda Cobb.
No surprise.
And I have been asked to participate on this tri-town trash district. And I am interested in serving and representing Wareham's interest.
Hight.
Have you spoken with Mr. Muniz about the responsibilities?
We have, we have had a brief email exchange, and I've been studying up on the minutes and any other documentation, and I'll look forward to further indoctrination.
I will follow her.
And I, because I wasn't approved, I didn't participate. I assume there was the meeting last night.
Yes.
I did see the minutes of that, and I'll catch up with you and get up to speed.
Oh, good. And I appreciate it, because it's two towns now, so each town has three representatives, and if, we need to have balance, otherwise it's 3-2. I'd rather have 3-3 than being a person playing two cards. But, but thank you very much.
At the risk of becoming known as the Trash Queen.
Yes, I think, I think you might be in line for that coronation.
Okay, well.
Anyway, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of recommending the, or approving Ms. Cobb's appointment?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous. Wednesday, pick the paperwork up, go get sworn in, and have a blast. Thank you so much for stepping up.
Thanks.
We're going to do Zoom until next year. We, the district, are going to continue Zooming.
Just as a point of information, the district will continue to Zoom their meetings. Mr. Muniz has informed me.
Hold on, thirty seconds.
Then it... The, okay.
Okay. Next up is the appointment for a constable, Cynthia Foles.
Foles.
And she had $169 for fees.
Hope it didn't bother her.
No, and she is a reappointment. Her paperwork was not quite ready when we did the last batch. All of her paperwork has been completed, so the application is totally in order. May I have a second to the motion, please?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous. Is it kind of like watching The Three Stooges, except there's five of us?
No.
Yeah, it's close.
No, it's, okay. So let's take care of Cynthia. Affordable Housing Truck Trust.
Before we get started, just want to make a comment. We have, again, procedures, policies, as far as the committees go. The bottom line of this is that the committees themselves, if someone's going to, you know, continue on, they should let their committee know by May, so by the beginning of June, it comes to us if there's going to be a new person. Also, we get recommendations sometimes from the chair. The committee itself never votes, never officially does anything. And really, the bottom line is that it's really up to us whether we appoint or not appoint. It really doesn't matter if the committee recommends or doesn't recommend. So at this point in time, you know, where we get fussy about it, the bottom line really is, it's our, it's our call and our choice how we do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your point is well taken, and in fact, we have made sure that we are getting votes from the committees in terms of the recommendations, sir.
I understand.
Thank you.
All right, next up is...
We didn't vote. Oh, we did.
We did. Missy Dizik, for a position on the Wareham Affordable Trust, the term to expire no later than June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Motion made for the Affordable Housing Trust to a term expire 2023. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous.
Next up is Wareham Cultural Council, and I move that we approve Wendy Bargoli.
Brigholi.
That's what I said.
No, you said Brog.
You did a hard G.
You did a hard G. It's a soft G.
Okay.
Actually, it's Brigholi.
It is Brigholi.
Brigholi, that's what, you know, when I was, you know, Brigholi, when I was a kid, was a piece of steak with some seizing on it. But, okay. Wareham Cultural Council, term to expire no later than June 30th, 2023.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
There you go. Motion made and seconded to appoint Wendy Brigholi to the Wareham Cultural Council. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous. Next.
Next up is the Wareham Council Council, the term to expire June 30th, 2023, and I have three. I have Kristi Legueux.
You have two more.
Jamie Wixton?
Wixton.
Yeah, I see. I got that one right. Who's I'm missing? Oh, we did Wendy already, so there's only two left.
Yep.
I move we approve those two.
Second.
Motion made to reappoint Kristi Legueux and Jamie Wixton to the cultural council. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous. Next would be the Community Preservation Committee.
And Community Preservation is Barbara Smith, and I move that we approve her to a term to expire June 30th, 2024.
She is the representative from the historical district commission, the historical commission.
Correct.
And we do have a vote on that.
Yeah, every year I have a philosophical discussion about whether these automatic seats where, on the Community Preservation Committee, that, under the law, go to certain committees, whether we even need to do anything. So are we ratifying an appointment? Are we making an appointment?
I think we're ratifying the appointment.
Yeah, whatever.
And next I have the...
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous.
Next I have Council on Aging, and I have Anna Marie Dunn, Carolyn Heinz.
Yeah, Dunn is a different way.
What?
Dunn is different. She's going to be moving down.
She's moving down?
Yeah. So those are the two appointments.
All right, so I'll do Heinz and Claude?
Plourde.
Plourde?
Plourde.
I'll tell you. All right, so Carolyn Heinz and Melissa Prague.
Second.
And they have different expiration terms?
Yeah, their expiration is...
As on the agenda.
June 30th, 2025. And one is June 30th, 2024. God, I didn't even see the extra.
All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous.
And the next one is Ann Marie Dunn, and Ann is appointed as an honorary member to the Council on Aging Board of Directors for a term to expire no later than June 30, 2022.
Let me explain that there really isn't any such position. However, the director has asked, because Ms. Dunn has been an active and interested member, she needed to step back because she's not able to make all of the meetings, but the board would like to have her. So we're sort of creating some...
I guess we just made one.
Yeah, we just created something.
She's a non-voting member?
That's correct. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous.
Okay, next up is Melissa Dyer, and she is being appointed as a Library Board of Trustees for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2022.
Now, let me explain that one as well, because the way I read their bylaws, she is, the way I read the bylaws, she has already served the two terms that their bylaws say that, that she can serve. Unfortunately, the Library Trustees have begun moving forward in a very active and appreciated way, and they feel very strongly that they would like to have Ms. Dyer continue for a one-year period. Normally, it would be a four-year, but we're going to, I'm, we're recommending, we're slinging on this one. Did you get a second on that?
I didn't.
Is there...
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to appoint Ms. Melissa Dyer for a one-year term. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous.
All right, so...
Skipping over ZBA?
Yeah, skipping that one.
And these ZBA ones, we're skipping over for now.
And we're doing...
Hold on. The next one is going to be really simple, because this is going to be very easy. I move that we appoint as weight, as certified weight masters for the town of Wareham to a term to expire, is expired June 30th, 2022, as printed in the agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to appoint all of the individuals named. All those in favor, say aye.
Same ones we do every year.
You have a question, sir?
Quick discussion here.
Yes, sir.
We discussed this last year, and it was going to be brought up and addressed, the proper designation and under which article, which general law, and you can move forward with it. I'm just not going to, I'll just vote present.
Okay, thank you.
Because I would like it addressed properly.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We'll try and remember that. All those in favor of those appointments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining?
Abstaining.
To abstain, a present and an abstention, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay.
Young lady stole my...
Thank you, sir.
Are you going to steal it again? So we got just...
Okay, let's do the certificate of appreciation.
Okay, I'll do it right now. All right, so, okay, so everybody, I don't know if everybody knows here, but certainly a lot of you people have already run into this gentleman.[1634.15] He worked here for approximately 18 years. His name is Robert Ethia. He was our Board of Health, until today, he was our Board of Health agent.
Director.
Terrific gentleman, did a whale of a job for this town, is gonna have tough shoes to fill, but Patrick, his assistant, has been appointed to take his place, and we're hoping good things for him as well. But I have a little certificate I'd like to read on, on behalf of, for Robert. "On behalf of the citizens of Wareham, we, the Board of Selectmen, congratulate you on your well-deserved retirement after 18 years of outstanding service to the town of Wareham. Your job description has evolved from when you first came to work for the town. Helping to draft rules and regulations for the Board of Health is just one of many accomplishments. Through the past 14 years, uh, sure, the past 14 months have been the most challenging of your career. You have continued to work tirelessly. We are grateful, and we thank you for your around-the-clock dedication and commitment to safety and well-being of our community. Food service workers of Wareham will no longer fear the man in the black hat." And believe me, they did. He, you know, he actually did a whole bunch of other towns. He used to go out on, on his own with some other towns and go and do their restaurant inspections, because he's that good. And he's just terrific. You know, he's available all the time, he was always available, 3:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning, the fire department would call him, "This department, there's a spill here, there's whatever," and Bob was always available and always handled it. "We, the Board of Selectmen, commend you on your years of service and wish you continued good health and good fortune." Presented this first day of July, 2021, and it's signed by Judith Whiteside, Chair, Patrick Tropiano, Clerk, James M. Muniz, Alan H. Slavin, and Peter W. Titlebaum. Now, we did go to his meeting, his last official meeting yesterday, and present him with this, and we also had another little prize for him. We gave him the, the official town watch.
Yes.
When you retire. It was a paper watch with a little thing on it.
It was a Rolex. It was one of the most expensive Rolexes.
Yeah, we gave him a real expensive Rolex, paper Rolex, it was pretty nice. And we, so we did give it to him, and unfortunately, couldn't be with us tonight because he actually, we moved the meeting, as everybody was aware of, from Tuesday tonight, and so he actually has a night job that he's always done at the Bourne Scenic Park. I don't know if anybody knows what that is, but he's a, as you would figure, he's the guy that keeps everybody in line over there. And, you know, he's working and, and he, he couldn't get anybody to fill in for him, so he, he's, he's there, and we miss him really well, he's been a terrific guy, and he's been a friend of mine for more than, I don't know, 40 years, I guess. So I've known him for a couple of years as well. So, great guy, thank you, Robert, and I hope everybody wishes him well.
What happened today actually was the town employees gave Bob a party this afternoon. I was able to attend, and it was well-received. I signed his card saying, "I promise not to call you more than twice a week."
Very good, thank you, Mr. Slavin. Okay, we have a discussion and possible vote to approve a budget transfer between two line items in the same account, and we will give Mr. Tropiano time.
All right, where are we going backwards here?
Discussion of budget.
Discussion and possible vote on budget transfer request. Hold on, let me get it out. Hang on to your sneakers here. All right, what's this one? Is this the one? Budget transfer, look at that, it was right on top. All right, all right, so, the request is from SI wages to SI expenses, and it's, it's to repair to a vehicle that is used only for SI. You know, does anybody know what SI is?
Municipal investigations, I don't know.
I don't know.
It's municipal maintenance department, it's a vehicle used for, I knew what it was, so I'm having a senior moment.
Well, it says it's shut down during the winter.
But it is, it is municipal maintenance.
Snow and ice.
Snow and ice.
That's it, snow and ice. Good job, so, huh? Isn't that great? Snow and ice.
Under the law, in order to transfer funds from one line of a budget to another, we have to approve it. It has been recommended by the Finance Committee and signed off by everyone else except us.
You have to sign it, so...
Yes.
And I approve, I, I, I say we do it.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor of authorizing the chair to sign, say aye.
I got more stuff to sign, yeah.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous.
This is, you, you...
The donation?
This is one of those meetings you should have skipped.
No. We're gonna now have a really good news with some money.
Oh, Jim didn't sign this one, Jim didn't sign, oh, Jim, I know what happened, he...
Yep.
Said present.
You're good.
All right, so I think this is all signed now. And these we are on hold. Okay, good, we're getting there. All, I don't know, but we are. All right. Except the donation from Wareham Free Library, Ray Goncalves, that's going. Just the priorities, that's going, bye-bye. All right, next up. All right, I can move on if you want.
Yes, please.
All right, I move, I move that we accept a donation of $10,000 donated to the Wareham Free Library on behalf of the Wareham Library Foundation, James Mendez.
Is there a second?
Generously donated.
Motion made and seconded to accept a very generous donation of $10,000. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous.
Okay, and the next up is the earth removal that we put off for Highland Inc. I believe at this point, uh, there he is. So I believe there were some questions, I know that all of the paperwork has been updated and the lists, this is from June 18th through May 21st, all the different loads and the things, and I believe, and one of the questions, and I asked, believe it or not, I called John today and asked him, because I wanted to know, and they, they verified it by survey, so this was actually done by survey.
Do you... May I?
Yes, certainly, Mr. Muniz. Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, Brian Wallace with J.C. Engineering.
Thank you.
So you do surveys?
We do surveys, yeah, on the property with on-the-ground equipment.
How high's the, um, what's, what's the depth of excavation at this point in time?
Uh, it varies throughout the site, it's based on where groundwater is.
Know where you're working, though. You're just working in one corner there now.
Yes, they've worked on that one corner, and they've moved across the site, sort of, and they've started excavating some of the other side of that, kind of the open field there.
Right, so what, what are we going from and to then?
We would be getting lower, because the groundwater is lower as you move south.
Okay, um, if you, I just would like a, I'd like to know where in the site you're working.
Mm-hmm.
So if you could give us that information as we move forward, I would suggest personally, there's a number of things I'd like to see. I want to know what the plan is for replacing soils and or, in the parts of the areas of the mining, the pit mining that you haven't done. Also, you said, you said you're taking measurements, could you provide those for us on a yearly basis?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we'd be happy to. We do provide, we do certify the amounts that are reported.
I know you certify them, could you just, you know, provide us a...
Sure, absolutely.
On a yearly basis on that?
Yep.
So, this comes out of the earth removal. So restoration plan is what we're looking for, as far as, you know, we're not working in the pit, so as you move forward, it just, who knows what'll happen, we don't end up with a, a big sandball out there. Also, I know in, in previous, different but previous meetings, been identified, there's a lot of tires out there, boats, trailers and whatnot. It's also a large, a large patch of white material out there. I'd like to kind of know what it is, and I'd like to see those things cleared up. As, as you probably know, or you don't know, in 2011, DEP made a decision that, you know, you gotta gate off all your roadways in there and whatnot, and to clean the stuff up, so anything that would happen thereafter, you have control of. So it'd just be nice to take care of those things.
May I just let you know that the action, the cleanup action, in fact, was taken, so what, the stuff that you see there has been dumped since that order.
Well, right, so, I'm identifying the things that were brought up during a more recent...
Right.
Separate but similar, a, a separate proposal for the site, and I'd like to see those things cleaned up, you know, as, as, as an understanding that it's not a dumping site.
Right.
And it, the stuff shouldn't have been dumped there if it was gated off and controlled. And, and I don't know about roadway, I've spoken with Mr. Sullivan about this, but the culvert next to Otis's ditch on Glen Charlie Road, do you know where the Land Trust car top put in is in the town-owned property on Spectacle Pond, the ditch that runs between them?
Not familiar myself with that.
Okay, well, that's kind of taking a beating. So, like I said, I spoke with Mr. Sullivan, and as part of, I think, the conditions, it's, you know, you get some heavy traffic going over there. I will say, I appreciate the effort you put into providing this latest list, and, you know, those quarters add up, and in six years, we've collected $50,216. And, you know, thank you for, for providing this, and this is, when you're gonna do graveling operations or mining operations of town, this is a process you should use. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, if you want to do three years, fine, I'd like to see a year and see if they can clean up some of the stuff and, and come back, but that would just be my suggestion.
Well, I would, can I?
Please.
I would say that there is a lot of gravel removal people in this town that don't follow any of these regulations and have not got any permits at all. And I can tell you where they are, and where the spaces are, and where they're taking it out of, and so I, I appreciate that you guys, that these guys are keeping track of something at least, and I, I, I applaud Jim for his diligence and, and stuff about this kind of thing, because, you know, you know, we're getting, you know, some people will say, "Well, this is Wareham." Well, you know, it's time we step up to the next level, you know, so this is good.
Thank you.
Keep it going, and we'll be in great shape.
Thank you.
I move that we approve the earth removal permit for Highland Inc.
To expire?
To expire July 2nd, 2024.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded for an expiration date of July of 2024. Mr. Slavin, do you have a question?
As we know, the property is for sale, has been for a while. You probably can't answer, but if the property is sold, does the permit continue with, with a new owner?
I'm sorry?
If the property is sold, which is up for sale now, and there are at least three or four people looking at it, does that permit continue with, with a new owner?
No, because it's in their name.
It's in their name.
As soon as somebody else, it's gone.
Okay.
I think, I think the bylaw might even say it's not transferable.
You'd have to come back in.
Yeah, I just want to make that clear.
Yes, sir.
And the reason I, I asked for the delineation of where they're working, they're approaching where, the limits of where the permit was approved for, 900 and some odd feet from the development north of it. So, it'd just be kind of nice to know, and, you know, I, I, I know you have a sister company, and you provide material for the concrete business, I believe, I don't know that for sure, and...
That's correct.
I'm not trying to be difficult, I just like to, I think this is a process we should take, and, again...
We could, we could actually write a letter and just ask them to give us an annual update, if you would like that, in terms of the questions that you've asked.
Yeah, we'd be happy to, you know, as far as quantities go.
Well, I would like those things resolved, that's why I wanted a one-year...
Yeah, well, I understand that, yeah.
And not a three-year...
Right.
...permit, and then come back, and take care of it, I don't have any problems, it's, it's what it is, but otherwise, we can come back in three years, and maybe it'll be done, and maybe it won't.
If I may... I have a motion and a second to extend it through 2024. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstaining?
Nay.
Nay?
Yeah.
Mr. Slavin?
Aye.
Uh, 401, thank you.
No, 410.
410.
Is liquor locker here?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Come on down. Information and discussion with Ranchard Inc.
Mr. Patel?
GBA liquor locker.
Are you Mr. Patel?
No, I'm not the Mr. Patel, but I'm, I'm be up on him right now.
Okay.
He's not available, that's why.
May, could you have a seat, please, and identify yourself, please? And I guess I'm gonna have to ask you to spell your last name, sir.
My name is Gautam Patel.
Could you spell your first name?
Patel.
Thank you. We've asked you here this evening, and we actually asked you here a couple of, last week, I guess, to tell us your plans, we understand that you were shut because of a fire.
Yep.
And there were some issues about whether there had been a building permit taken out and applied for and granted, and then a certificate of occupancy. I don't believe that we were ever notified that the business was in fact shut, except by reading it in the newspaper, and that is a condition of a license, that you, you're supposed to tell us when you can't do business, okay? And I understand that, that you're not the owner, that you're here representing him. Are you open now, sir?
Yeah.
Did Mr. Requena sign off on the building, the building inspector, did he sign off on all of the...
Actually, they says like, my, the landlord is a different, so he says like you all said, so we just open it. And then, like, he's not here, but he's just, because after the building inspector go through and whatever he says, because we are the tenant, so we don't know anything.
Do you have a copy of what Ms., Ms., what would have been signed?
I don't know, but he gave me all these papers.
Could you give it to Mr. Bowen, please? Thank you. I know that, that you opened, not you, but the, the business opened without proper building inspection permit, and Mr. Requena ordered the business shut until that had been taken care of. I believe, in my conversations with Mr. Requena, that that has been taken care of.
Okay. You know, there's literally nothing in the file for it.
Okay, well, we're just asking why he's here.
He already extended it, but...
Yeah, the, your license was extended, but I, I think the point of this was really to have the owner understand that if he cannot be doing business, he must notify the Selectmen's Office to say that he is shut and why he's shut.
Oh.
Okay, that...
Yeah.
We, as the license issuers, the local licensing authority, we have to, we have to be informed of that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
As do the police.
So, this is, and for my concern, I don't know anything on this thing.
I understand that, sir.
But like, must be, this is the first appearance, so we doesn't know about all these things, but beside that, I don't have any answer for that at the moment.
He's a permit...
All right, so...
Mr. Muniz, do you have a question, please?
He's the license holder, not you, but...
That's correct.
So they, they, they need to know the responsibilities of...
Okay, so like...
But holding a license, I think, I would, I would think they should, but...
They have to.
Yeah, they have to, so...
So, this, this, this is not complete, are you, are you open now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Without an occupancy permit?
No, they did get an occupancy permit.
They did? It's not here?
I spoke with Mr. Requena, and the, the problem was the...
I think it's, it's pending.
Status pending.
Yeah, the, I believe, in my conversations with Mr. Requena, the issue was that the owner had paid the contractor, the work had been done, but no permits had been applied for by the contractor, and that has been taken care of, to my understanding.
Yeah, definitely, I got the permits right here, so, yeah, the permits have been applied.
Yeah, so the permits have now, you know...
Cassie could look that up.
I'm sorry?
Cassie can look that up online.
Yeah. It's very important that Mr. Patel understand his responsibilities under the law. Because we could, we have the power to have a show cause hearing and to have the license removed from his, from him.
Yeah.
And we choose not to do that, that's why we asked for him to come before us and explain what his plans were.
Okay, so I will tell him, like, you know, as, as soon as he's available, he'll be right here.
I don't, I don't think he needs to come, I think he needs to understand...
Oh, yeah.
...what his responsibilities are, and he could call the office, or he can actually look online for the ABCC license regulations under chapter 138. Am I correct, Mr. Bowen?
Correct.
Correct. It's up to him, the license holder, to follow the rules.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's up to us to make sure the rules are followed.
But if I, anything we can, has to go through, any process, I can, like, you know, we can try to finish it as soon, because we already suffer, like, you know, while all this closing, plus the roadwork is right there on the front of us, so we have, like, tremendous, like, loss since last year.
Do you know what the ABCC is?
Not me, but the person who must...
Okay, well, it's the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission.
Yeah.
If they came into your place when you were supposed to be opened and closed, or if you, and they came and it was fire and it was empty, and they just happened to come to your place, and by the way, they do this, they would take your license away and there's not a thing we could do about it.
Yeah.
I do have a question. Maybe you can answer it, maybe you can't. When the fire happened, my understanding is that the state did in fact come down and inspect it and that the contents of the building were deemed not saleable.
Correct. You had to throw away.
They had to throw away the inventory.
Yeah. And we already submitted a receipt to the health department.
Thank you. Mr. Slavin?
Maybe out of courtesy that we'll have the, if the chair would like us just to write a letter to the owner outlining where and what, so they have an idea. Because it could be, could be a language or a communication problem with it.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
That's fine. We will try and explain what the responsibilities are and we appreciate the damage that the roads have done and, you know, being shut down. The businesses along that route have really suffered and we appreciate that.
Another year to go.
All right. He doesn't really know much.
Okay, so we.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions of this gentleman?
So, we.
You're all set.
All set. Thank you.
And you're. Yeah. We will, I will be sending a letter to the owner
Okay.
at his place of business explaining why we asked him to come and what we would like him to make sure that he knows.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Enjoy your evening.
Yeah.
You know, that's, it's not really very nice to have this selectman ask you twice to come in and then to send somebody who actually has no answers to anything.
I understand that.
But anyway. All right, next up is DB Delivery LLC, DBA Doobie.
Now, you're going to identify yourselves for the record. We have three host community agreements that we would vote to approve Mr. Sullivan's signature on. Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan, in fact, has reviewed all three of them, as has Mr. Buckland. Would you identify yourselves for the record?
Absolutely. Good evening, Madam Chairman, Board Members, Counselor. My name is Phil Mackey of Mackey &amp; Mackey. I'm counsel for on behalf of DB Delivery MA. Address 1256 Washington Street, Norwood, Massachusetts. With me are the Kennedys, the majority owners of DB Delivery, and we already got heads shaking, so they can give their names as well.
Hi, I'm Erica Kennedy. Ooh, sorry. I'm Erica Kennedy.
How you doing? I'm Justin Kennedy.
And you are both Wareham natives, am I correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Do you have any questions of these individuals?
No. This is pretty straightforward. These are licensed, these are host community agreements, sorry, not licenses. For cultivation, manufacturing, and delivery operation. Just so the public understands what the three agreements are.
Yep. Is that a straight delivery or a courier delivery?
Straight delivery.
Thank you. So, I.
The courier delivery runs off of the retail sale.
I know.
So, they've got the right ducks in a row.
Yeah, looking through them on the delivery portion, that is, that is, is a sales tax placed on that, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
So, it's in addition to the agreement of the impact fee, which is the same for all three.
Yes.
But on the delivery portion, there's an additional sales tax.
Correct.
Okay. I just, I didn't see that in the document. So, I mean, it's understood, but I just, you know, it was a lot of reading, so I just kind of bulleted those.
We apologize. It was a hefty packet.
So, but thank you.
Mr. Slavin, any questions?
No, the Cannabis Control Commission does not make life easy.
Yeah, good luck with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move approval for cultivating, manufacturing, and delivery operations.
To?
To Doobie, Doobie as marijuana cultivators and manufacturers and operators. Okay?
It's actually DB Delivery MA LLC, DBA Doobie as a marijuana cultivator, et cetera. I just want to make sure that the record is correct.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
It brings me back to the 60s with the name of the company.
Yeah, Doobie. You got a Doobie, please?
A vote, please.
Don't bog out that joint.
All those in favor of signing these agreements, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you. I'm going to say Wednesday in the office on the third floor. And thank you very much for choosing to do business in Wareham and best of wishes to both of you.
Thank you so much. We look forward to definitely impacting the community of Wareham, so thank you.
Good for you. Good luck.
Next up is discussion and possible vote to change the membership configuration from 11 to 7 for the Wareham Veterans Council, which was created by and is appointed by the Wareham Board of Selectmen. And there's a letter here that the Wareham Veterans Council requests lowering their membership from 11 to 7. We have had, had an impossible task of abstaining a quorum even before COVID-19. Our membership has declined to four with several members not renewing their appointments or resigning for personal reasons. So, you know, they're having an issue and they request that we move it from 11 to 7.
I have a question, Mr. Slavin. I know that you've been talking with Mr. Audrick. Why wouldn't they want to take it down to five?
Well, I think they have a requirement that they have to have one member from the American Legion, one member from the VFW. I talked to them about this because I meet with them often, obviously. We went from nine to 11 because we had other people that wanted to join and we accommodated them at that time. Unfortunately, due to age, as much as anything else, they've lost people in activity. I think we may have to go back and revisit this. They may have to end up going back to five, but they think they can function with seven. But I have a strong feeling by a year from now, we'll be at five.
Okay, just for the record, you brought this up. There's one member from the VFW, one member from the American Legion post, three citizen-at-large members, three veterans, and one veteran services officer as ex officio. Then there are two associate members, and really one of them can't be because he's a minor or she is a minor.
Correct.
And the other would be the person who runs the JROTC program at the high school. So, he could in fact, he can't be because he's not a resident of the town of Wareham.
We made him a special.
We made him an associate, right.
So, we have to basically reduce the veteran members?
Well, there's no reason that a citizen-at-large couldn't be a veteran.
Whatever way, but the bottom line is that we're going to have to change the makeup of it because we're listing nine.
We created it, so we get to.
What was the composition again? Just quick.
Composition?
Yeah, one from American Legion, one from VFW.
One VFW, one American Legion, three citizens-at-large, three veteran.
Three citizens-at-large.
Excellent.
Right?
Yeah. And the veteran services officer, ex officio. So, what would you gentlemen like to do?
I see. That's the motion. Second. He made the motion, I second.
Motion for seven?
Yeah, I think you can modify the citizens-at-large or the veterans, either or. May make it easier as well.
Okay. That sounds like a plan.
Well, they actually had a suggestion. Is anybody, I thought you guys had that, but I'll give it to you. Their suggestion, I believe.
It's my suggestion.
Is it your suggestion over here where it says one member VFW, one member American Legion, five citizens-at-large and/or veteran members?
That was, that was my recommendation.
Does that sound good?
Do you want me to withdraw my motion?
Add that to your motion?
Can you change your motion to be that?
So made.
Perfect.
Second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to reduce the number to
Seven.
Seven as outlined. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you so much, gentlemen.
All right, next is Curbside. Abatement recommendations. So, there's a bunch of abatements in here for Curbside, and let's see.
Total.
Total is on the front.
Is the total on the front?
Yeah.
$15,958.75.
So, I move we approve the opt-out and reduction fee applications, $15,958.75.
Second.
Second motion made by Mr. Troppiano and seconded by Mr. Slavin. Any questions? Any comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Aye. 4-0-1.
A confirmatory vote of a wigwam, that's all over with.
I understand that, but we have to confirm the vote. We took it under 48-hour business and I would like to make sure that our records.
Will we confirm the onset wigwam to place temporary signs on town property as a confirmatory?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you.
The next one, we don't even do. There's ratified conditional offer Patrick McDonald. Town has nothing to do with that. The Board of Health does the approval. We have zero to say about it. Doesn't matter whether we, we can say boo. It's over and done with. He's already got the job.
We could endorse him.
We can endorse it, then?
We can endorse him if you like. Sure. Would you like to endorse him?
Yeah, I'd like to. The hiring of Patrick McDonald as the Board of Health Director.
Perfect. Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Do you want to do that where the agenda doesn't really say that?
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution.
Fine.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, discussion and possible vote of the senior workoff. Can we, can we even deal with that?
Yes.
Because.
We have to, okay.
Usually Derek's here for this, so, all right.
What's the proposal?
All right, so the proposal says.
The proposal is to go to offer the senior workoff program. There are limits as outlined by the federal law and the minimum wage is $13.50. People who apply for this must qualify under the income guidelines, which are set again by the federal government and on an annual basis.
$1,200 reduction in real estate taxes.
Right. And on an annual basis, we have five to 12 people who want to do this. It enables them to help pay their real estate taxes.
It actually works out pretty well for some of the seniors.
The application goes through the council on aging director.
I think, I think the money is provided through the assesses' office also. Some kind of fund that's pushed aside, if I remember right.
I don't remember that, but I know that that's how it is.
Jackie sets it up, so we'll limit it to how much money we have available.
All right, the annual income must be within the maximum guidelines, 37, 750 and married couple of 43, 150.
Second.
So, okay, great.
Motion made and seconded to approve the program.
The workoff program.
Senior tax workoff program. Motion made and seconded.
Yep.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? It is unanimous.
Discussion and possible vote of assignment, reassignment of liaisons.
Guess what, gentlemen? We're going to go one more, two more weeks.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
No, I just have a couple of things that I've talked to Jim ahead of time. If it's okay, I'll just, just a couple of things I can take care of today, if you'd like.
Are they the liaison reports?
Not the reports, no, the assignments.
Assignments.
Oh, the assignments. I don't have any objection.
I was going to ask Jim if he would take over the Wareham Historical Commission for personal reasons for me, and also that he and I would split the ZBA and the planning board because we both have conflicting Monday and Wednesdays, so we can't both, we both can't do it all the time.
Is that okay?
So, if that's okay with Jim.
Okay, can you mark?
That's her. She actually assigns liaisons.
I understand.
She's the, she's the lord of liaisons.
Okay, so also, is it okay, now that you brought it up, if I add my name to the council on aging, seeing as how I was, I was there for an hour and 47 minutes this morning?
Aren't you special?
Aren't I special? Thank you, Mr. Slavin.
Since we're doing that, I just want to read something into the record. I got pigeonholed this morning at the Narrow's Restaurant. I guess the sewer commissioners met last week.
I'm looking for the planning board.
I'm going to read what they voted on, just so we put it into the record. Because it has to do with.
With liaisons?
Yeah.
Okay.
This came from Jim Gilberti, the chair. At the June 24th, 2021 meeting, the Board of Sewer Commissioners, a majority vote was taken to recommend Patrick Troppiano to remain our only liaison from the Board of Selectmen.
What is it?
I didn't hear it.
I didn't hear what you said.
Just want Patrick alone as liaison.
Yeah. The question actually is, I'm not sure we even have, as an elected board, I'm not sure we even have the ability to put someone on, even as a liaison.
Well, it's interesting because we have other boards that.
Yeah, but this is, this is, this is an elected board.
Yeah.
You know, by the public, so we don't, we don't assign them. The appointing authorities don't exist on this or anything.
Okay. We have received the letter and.
I'll put it in the file.
Put it in the file.
I'm just.
Thank you. Well, I tried to skip over it. We do have old business.
There you go. Hold on, we're going to get to it.
No, this is going to go.
You want me to put that in here too?
I want to put that in there, yeah.
All right. Okay, next up is, oh yeah, next up is Lucky Goat.
Old business.
Geez, you, you hung in here. You're pretty good. You hung in pretty good.
He didn't dare leave because he wanted this to be done tonight.
All right, so.
This is Kendall Peabody representing Lucky Goat. Go ahead.
So, did you decide on a limit or a plan with a limit number? Because 10 is just kind of bizarre, dude.
He did, in fact, supply a business plan.
Yes, he did.
He did supply all of the information that we required of him. I have consulted with town council and the only thing that we need to do is move to decide that giving out samples is not a retail.
Correct, which we can do.
Which we can do.
What does your plan say about?
Yeah, how many? Because you were a little unclear, so can we get it out in the public?
Does it say three in your plan?
So, the plan is it's maximum four, two ounce samples.
Okay.
Which we, I outline away a track.
All right, I can deal with that. I just, the 10 thing kind of threw me for a loop last week.
It was never going to be 10.
Two weeks ago, okay. All right, so I, okay, I.
Any other questions to Mr. Peabody, Mr. Slavin?
No, I'm happy we're able to get this done. I went and actually got the information today. It came to us as far as your plan. And I went through it, then I went ahead and pulled plans from a couple of the, you know, breweries in Massachusetts and everything fits right in the same. I have no issue with this at all. Thank you.
The only question that I had, and I have asked Mr. Peabody to address it because he will be coming back to us for a, an additional license. My reading of the law and the definition of farmer and his reading of the law and definition of farmer are slightly different. Mr. Peabody is responsible for providing the information that will allow us to continue with that. But this, the only thing that we're doing right now is getting you to hand out samples. I think, if we get a motion.
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I move that the Board of Selectmen find that the applicants providing of free samples is not a retail activity.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Mr. Peabody, I will send you an email tonight on the town letterhead so that when you want to start doing this tomorrow, you will be blessed and on your way. Am I correct, Mr. Bowen?
It's approved as the plan presented.
Yeah.
It's just not, so, and thank you because you basically did what I had requested on the two-by-four and the two ounces required by state. So, that's what we should do and I'm not going to be there measuring.
You're not?
Maybe two fingers.
Don't worry about that. I don't want to give out more than I need to.
We can't have anything to do with that.
Thank you, though.
Yes, Mr. Bowen?
Madam Chairman, the, since you'll be sending a letter to the ABCC reciting the board's vote and its finding, I'm sure that letter will also say that the approval, the finding was predicated on the representation that the limit of four
Two-by-four.
is not retail, which would mean that if it were more than four, it would be retail, which would be a problem for you.
They're four two-ounce, two-ounce samples, am I correct?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Eight ounces, though. Eight ounces maximum.
You know, I've taken a lot of abuse over the name of the HCAs and this is, guys, stop picking on Judy. Yeah, acronyms. Mr. Peabody, I think you're all set. Thank you so much. And I will get that to you in email either, I'll do it tonight, so that you're all set. And on Tuesday, we will send the letter to the ABCC. Okay?
Do I have to wait until Tuesday? Am I, are clear for tomorrow once I get the letter?
You are clear for, no.
I think that's a question you might want to ask the ABCC. So, if you started serving freebies tomorrow based on this vote, well, they might say, okay, they might send an agent down and bust you. So, personally, I would wait for the letter to go to the ABCC or, as selectmen, he says, call them and ask.
I'll check, I'll check.
But, you know, with this sort of thing, you know, it's at your risk. And, you know, that's a really important thing to understand. It's not at the selectmen's assistants' risk. It's not at the chairman's risk. This stuff is at your risk, so as a license holder, it's up to you to make sure that the stuff is all in line, not up to the board.
Would you like us to supply Ralph's phone number?
I'm sure he has Mr. Scaramone's number.
Yes, no?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
Do you have the Director of the ABCC's phone number?
I, I have their, yeah, I have their number. I don't have a direct number, but I have like.
If you have, if you have a problem, call me.
Yeah, sounds good, y'all.
So, why don't you give a plug? Where's your business located and what are your hours?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear a question.
Where is your business located and what are your hours of operation? Give yourself a plug here.
At three seventy-nine Main Street in Wareham, Massachusetts. The hours will be two, two-thirty, two-seven on Wednesdays, Fridays, and from eleven to seven on Saturdays, and from twelve to six on Sundays.
Thank you.
This is, the location is the former seafood restaurant and fish market on Main Street, and it's next door to the Gateway Motors, et cetera.
Correct. Where's your parking? I didn't think to ask that question.
Oh, it's, it's side and back.
It's a huge parking area.
I know, it's huge. I didn't know how it was divided with the owners.
The owners are just now putting up the landscaping that was required in that particular setup. If you notice, the curbing's just gone in for.
I saw that, yeah. Okay, good.
Yeah.
Do you have any further questions of us, Mr. Peabody?
I know, just thank you so much for, I know this has been a difficult process, so I want to thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, good luck.
Appreciate your patience also. It's not been easy.
It's uncharted territory for all of us.
Yes, it is.
The town administrator is not here to give his report at my request. And do we have any twenty-four hour, forty-eight hour business?
Well, we just, we wanted to quickly discuss solar bylaw, solar bylaw study committee.
Sure.
And.
Do you want to come forward?
So, I had reached out and got a list that I think Derek and Nancy, or Derek and Richard had put together. Took and chewed on it and put together a committee of seven members, possible members. This is whether we like them and of course suggestions and should change the order. Seven voting members and three ex officio non-voting. The members would all be citizens of the town of Wareham. Local conservation group, farmer, solar developer, nonpartisan at large, open space, CONCOM member. Zoning Board of Appeal members, Planning Board member, and then I put down a Board of Assessors member. And then for non-voting, Director of Planning Development or Departmental Designee, Board of Selectmen Liaison, Town Administrator or Director of Finance or Departmental Designee.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you read those again and?
Which one?
The whole list?
Okay, local conservation group member. You know, they all have to be citizens of the town. Farmer, solar developer. They have a solar interest and they're a landowner, a landowner developer, solar interest. But they have to be a citizen of the town. Nonpartisan at large. Open space or slash CONCOM Committee Member. Zoning Board of Appeals Member. Possible Board of Assessors Member. Planning Board Member. Ex officio non-voting, Director of Planning and Development or Departmental Designee. Board of Selectmen Liaison. Town Administrator or Director of Finance or Departmental Designee. Those are non-voting members.
And you and Mr. Swenson and Mr. Sullivan, Ms. McHale are the, are you the, the guys and gals who put this together?
I've got the part of what, I guess, Mr. Sullivan and Ms. McHale and some others have put together, which said conservation interest, town land use interest, town general interest, solar industry developer interest. But it's important that it be, they be citizens, the voting members.
Mr. Slavin, do you have questions? I'm sorry.
In, in that list, did you have Mr. Buckland as part of that?
Ex officio non-voting, Director of Planning and Development or Departmental Designee.
There was some discussion today with Mr. Buckland, and he's overcommitted with the Road Commissioners, the WRA, et cetera. And his department, he hasn't got the assistant hired yet. That's still pending out there. We're putting an awful strain on this particular person, trying to do everything, which is physically impossible. I would hope that we find some way, if we're gonna get him into this, that we definitely get him out of the others. Because we're only gonna to definitely put a strain on his ability to do his job.
Yeah, and that's why I said a Departmental Designee, and CONCOM's under there and, and.
All right, just as long as we clear it out, because it's, even the Planning Board, the Planning Board, I think, has two or three places they have to also put members in different committees as well. And it's extremely difficult to get them, to get that done.
It's a zoning bylaw. I'm not arguing one way or the other, and.
No, I just want to lay it out so we know. I just want to make sure it's easy to do. It's important to get this done.
That's why I kept the number down to seven. I didn't, I didn't want this extended thing. And again, this is just a suggestion to make a, a board appointed by the Selectmen. And, you know, a committee charged with writing the town of Wareham Solar Bylaw to reflect their deals with the citizens of Wareham, protect the rights of landowners. The committee would have a Chair and a Clerk and any of the offices it decides upon, will operate under open meeting law, seek public input on a regular basis, and seek expert advice to help in crafting the document. This committee will sense that, be dissolved unless a request is made otherwise to the Select Board after the annual Spring Town Meeting of twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you for doing all of that work. I would like to have you send it to us in writing, so that we could approve it.
I'll send it to you. And I'd like suggestions too.
Yeah, I think we'd like to not necessarily chew on it, but I think you've, you've really, you know, put together something, but we should have it on our agenda on the thirteenth to approve your recommendation, which I think we might have questions of, we might not.
I didn't expect a vote. I just wanted to put it on the table so you'd know, and Nancy McHale's here, and she's been working hard at, at trying to move the new solar bylaw forward. And I don't know if she'd like to say something.
You, you obviously, obviously were part of putting this together, am I correct?
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
I think that the more input there is, and the more buy-in from the assorted committees and people in town, all of the stakeholders, the better off the bylaw will be for that. If, we're trying not to make it be one-sided, okay? There's so much angst right now about solar in general. And a lot of it is coming down from, from the top and from the bottom and from the developers and from, you know, all of the, don't cut down any trees. Well, there may be a time that we really need to cut down some trees, but maybe not. So we need to take a look at what the options are out there. Get some recommendations from solar developers, look at what really is out there, what possibilities there are, and look at the reality of the legislation and what's gonna pass muster. So I think it's, it behooves us to do it carefully and present a united front and a good bylaw when we come back to it.
We are, we're a little out of the bullpen of, it's not on the agenda. It is being brought up under your report, and that's fine, so we really.
No, no, I, I totally get that.
We'll bring it back on the, it's the thirteenth, right?
Thirteenth.
I just want to ask you one question, Mr. Minis. At the town meeting, there were some people who were farmers, who were concerned.
Linda Rinta.
Yes.
And I personally would love to see Linda on the bylaw committee.
So farmers are on?
Farmer, solar developer, landowner with solar interest.
Mr. Slavin, you had a question? I really don't want to discuss this too much. It's really not on the agenda.
It's just simply that October is here before we realize it, and we basically, the town meeting, said we would bring this back for the fall town meeting.
Yeah, but you recommended the spring of.
You know, and if they can get a good bylaw done by then, I'm sure they'd bring it forward. Otherwise, otherwise, what's in place stays in place, like it or not.
Yeah, correct. All I'm, all I'm saying is that.
I'd rather have something, go ahead.
We keep forgetting that when we get the Spring Town Meeting, Fall Town Meeting comes, and it's almost like, it's like a summer recess. And all of a sudden, comes September, you're looking to do stuff, and it's like you're almost out of time. So as soon as Jim can get this done to us, we can get this started at least.
Yeah. I can, Jim had provided me with a copy of it. I can send it off to you, email it off to you quickly. That would be fine.
Do you have a whole thing on it?
I can just, yeah.
Yeah, if you could just send it.
I've got this here, but I can, I can, I have it in, of course, I have it in my files.
So just send it to Cassie, please, and she will, or send it to all, send it to BOS.
Yeah.
Okay, we will put it on the agenda and we will discuss it.
And I just wanted to introduce it so that you could know that we, it just wasn't getting kicked down the road and nothing getting done.
Okay, thank you.
Liaison reports.
Liaison reports.
Thank you.
And I really would like to set a world record here. Mr. Slavin?
You're lucky. There's been a bunch of different meetings I've been going to. The only thing that's really of importance right now is the Opera Program. I had a call, a special meeting of Plymouth County Advisory Board for yesterday. Interesting trying to do that after my medical stuff. The meeting itself was, originally the county was going to pass initially getting involved with the Opera Program because of difficulties of the different qualifications. I think five or six towns had already applied for money claiming that the loss of revenue. The way the loss of revenue works is that you look at the overall package of how much revenue you had in during that timeframe. And unfortunately, between the sales of houses and everything else, the actual revenue was higher than, you know, pre-COVID. So therefore, nobody qualifies under that particular piece there, which is powerful, of course. The other thing that was discussed is that we have a very strong feeling that in twenty-twenty-three fiscal year, and twenty-twenty-four especially, we're expecting a fairly substantial downturn in the economy. Tom O'Brien, who's a treasurer, has been spot on as far as financial numbers for quite a while now. And they're highly recommending that we look seriously at not spending money quickly and really look at basically holding back and kind of looking for twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four, when we're really gonna need these particular funds. They will be running the program for us. They will basically monitor everything, they'll do all the forms and everything else. There's three hundred and fifty million dollars in this particular program that came, and I think, I forget how much Massachusetts gets. It looks as if we get somewhere in the range of four million from the county and two million directly through the state to us as well. So it's gonna be an interesting piece of change, but it's basically water, sewer, and broadband is where most of the money goes, as far as what's easy to do. So we have certain things that will qualify. We've reached out to Representative Keating to see whether or not it's possible to get the output to the canal somehow on the agenda, because it's kind of a regional type of project, which makes it a lot easier, because it involves four different towns technically. It may put us ahead of the curve, per se, because it's kind of close to being ready. And there's a couple, and Derek has a couple ideas that he wants me to also do. So we're planning to meet with Representative Keating to go over all this. But it's extremely important not to go ahead and just, you know, spend money thinking it's easy and quick. It's not, and really have to seriously look at this long-term. That's all I want to discuss today.
Thank you. Mr. Minis?
Had a conversation with Wareham Regional Refuge District Meeting last night. General business. That's it. I'm done. Go ahead.
I missed what you said.
Yeah, Peter.
Sorry.
I'll pass, given the hour.
Pass, given the hour.
All right, so one other thing I want to say is that I guess the school finally made the announcement. It looks like the school will be turned over to us in September, and we should be open in October. So that's a considerable short time. I don't know if anybody's been over there. I went by there today. They did the hills up and the thing and everything. The place is looking fantastic. And I gotta tell you, that committee has done a whale of a job, and they deserve a lot of credit for how this thing turns out. When you get inside there, you're gonna be amazed. I mean, that is going to be one school to be proud of, I'm gonna tell you right now.
It's, it's well on the budget, too.
And the budget, it's, they're blowing that away. I mean, it's, it's, just the financing alone was big savings. And the time, of course, makes all the difference in the world. Time is money, as everybody knows. So I was pretty happy about it. I guess that's all I have.
I have just an announcement. When we approved the change of manager for the Elks, the ABCC picked up on paperwork errors from the Elks. And they have sent information to our office, and we approved what we approved. Now the Elks needs to fix their paperwork laps, and that's why you were asked to sign something that you already have approved, but it has a different name on it, okay? The, the lodge number was incorrect. And we have some.
The bill.
The bond.
We have some, we have a bond that we're, it's a general obligation bond. And we are issuing at point six-five percent. That's basically free money. I just, it, it really comes down to our bond rating.
Yep.
Which is superb, despite the tightness of everything. We just, you know, we've done, we, Mr. Sullivan and his team have done an extraordinarily good job in terms of hanging on to stuff.
That was on the remediation, right? Except for the remediation at Tremont?
No, this is just a general obligation.
Okay. Thought I read one remediation at Tremont.
Okay, next, I move we approve the Bill of Richard P. Bowen for his monthly check, which.
You don't need.
Be almost up to date with that, to deal with that?
Yes. Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, abstaining. It is unanimous. We will pay you.
Let me see that, please.
Everybody sign it?
I don't know where it is.
It was down there. He's, Jim has it.
No, he doesn't.
It's right next to him. There's a folder right there. Isn't that?
Paternity?
Thank you. Let's see if there's some contents in there.
Could you have Alan do his thing, please?
Alan, can you do your thing, please?
Sure. Most into adjourn.
Not debatable. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you, gentlemen, for hanging in there.
Oh, too bad.
Appreciate it. Good night, Wareham.